We'll call our May 20 meeting of the Cookville City Council to order. Who have a roll call, please?
Councilman Wommack here. Councilman Miller here. Mayor Shelton here. Vice Mayor Wheaton here. Councilman Walker here. Five present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so, stand for the invitation given out by State Taboo River Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and United States Flag.
Good evening. That's right. Lord, we sure do love the sunshine. We sure do love the victory you're giving us over COVID. It's great to see some things return back to Cookeville normal. And it's this time though, we got a boatload of people moving in. We got blessings galore. And I pray that tonight, Lord, you just give blessings upon our city council and our city leaders as they seek to lead us and all these things that are before us. I thank you for them. I thank you for their time and their energy that you dedicate. And Lord, I pray your blessings on their families, God, that they would find freshness as they go home tonight. They find freshness in their friendships, God. I pray, Lord, that you bless those city workers that have spent hours, Lord, taking care of our city, that you bless the hospital workers, Lord, that have done such a tremendous job during COVID, Lord. And I pray that you continue to grow this community, not just in numbers, but in faith and family and in this beautiful friendships that you give us. Thank you, Lord. We love you and we thank you for Cookeville. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Adam, consider approval of agenda as presented. Are there any changes?
No changes.
All right. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All vote.
IVS motion carries.
Thank you. Under old business, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on May 6th. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All vote, please.
Five yes motion carries.
Under the consent agenda, 6A, set a date, 6/17/21 for a public hearing on ordinance 0210609, amending municipal code of the city of Cookeville as adopted by ordinance number 0021233, and it's since amended to revise in Title 16, entitled Streets and Sidewalks, et cetera, Chapter, entitled miscellaneous regulations for street and public ways, provisions related to littering in streets, alleys or sidewalks, and obstruction of drainage, ditches, and stormwater structures. 6B, consider awarding bid for LED illuminators for the electric department. 6C, consider awarding bid for lawn maintenance for wastewater treatment plant for water quality control department. And 6D, consider declaring a surplus vehicles for the police department. Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All vote.
Closing vote. IVS motion carries.
Under new business, 7A, hold a public hearing, consider on first reading ordinance 0210508, amending the budgets of the general fund, state street aid fund, solid waste fund, drug fund, tree board fund, animal patrol fund, customer service fund, and health insurance fund of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021. Ms. Emmer.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, this ordinance amends the budget appropriations for various funds for fiscal year '21, actually for eight of our 17 funds. And we're going to start right off with the general fund. It increases the appropriation for general fund revenues by $2,400,450. Local option sales taxes, you can see there is the largest amendment by far. The original budget was approved early on in the pandemic, actually about last spring at this time, and we anticipated negative impacts to this revenue stream. We now expect to exceed the original budget by over $1.5 million this year. And then also on there, you'll see we have the TEMA reimbursement. That is for the tornado from last March. And then insurance proceeds relate to a police vehicle that was totaled, and you'll see that in the expenditure side that's replaced. And then the police department every year gets awarded various grants during the year. So we've got $136,200 for those and $5750 for another PEP grant. And then $802,000 back last July, CRMC reimbursed us $802,000 for the TCRS contribution issue. So that's the revenue side of the general fund. On the expenditure side, this ordinance increases the appropriation for operating expenditures by $622,900. For the general department, we are appropriating funds for temporary salaries and wages. That's where we had a COVID lobby monitor working for us during the pandemic. Equipment included the touchless water fountains that we purchased and then $15,000 for the fee for the property assessor. And then for the police department, $21,000 is the SAS contract where we had extended that through June 30th, so that covers that fund. And then $30,000 in wages is a reduction, is actually being moved to the codes department for an IT position that we replaced there. And then the fire department amendments are due to retirements. And Public Works is expecting to exceed the original budget in repairs and maintenance and materials and supplies categories. So this amendment increases the budget for those categories. And for the codes departments, we've got the $30,000 increase for the IT position we moved from the police department. And then increases appropriations for employee insurance and property and liability insurance. The property and liability was additional cyber policy that we purchased during the year. And then there's also appropriations for the offsetting grant expenditures for the grant revenues that the police department got. And then we have some increases in workers' comp claims and general liability claims. When we put the budget together, we really, it's our best guess at what those could be. So we're expecting to have some increases there over the original budget. And then on the capital outlay expenditure side, for the police department, we're increasing capital for vehicles, $76,000. A month or so, a month or so back, we approved them purchasing a van for their use. And then we had to replace a vehicle that was totaled. And then in leisure services, we ended up not doing some park projects that we had originally budgeted for, but we did do the improvements at West End Park. And I've also added since the meeting on Monday, $10,000 for the fencing at King Creek Park. And then the $49,000 for codes department was all the AV upgrades that we did in this room and the conference room over there. So the total increase in appropriation for expenditures in the general fund is $529,900. And the net impact to the general fund balance is an increase of $1870,000. The original budget that we did for the general fund last spring had a deficit of $536,315. So with the amendment we did back in December for the pay adjustments and the amendment that we're doing here, the budget now has a surplus of over $2 million. And that's due to a lot in part due to nonrecurring revenue that we got this year, the reimbursement from CRMC for TCRS, the FEMA TEMA reimbursements for the tornado last year was received this year. So that kind of thing is really what's driving that surplus. Moving on to state street aid, we're increasing the appropriation for revenues there by $50,000. That's the state shared revenues of gas tax. And then the traffic signalization study council approved that last December. That's where their study in South Jefferson Avenue. So that appropriates funds for that. Net impact there is $5,000. For the solid waste fund, we're increasing revenues there, $95,000. And on the expenditure side, we're increasing revenues, $410,000. Again, workers' comp claims, repairs and maintenance are things that, you know, end up being more than what we had planned. And then salaries and wages, we had a retirement there. And then the capital item, a month or so back, we had purchased an additional garbage truck. And we did that because we had expected significant price increases in the new fiscal year. So we went ahead and tried to save money by buying it now. So that appropriates additional funds in the capital line there. So the net impact is to overall reduce solid waste fund balance by $315,000. The drug fund, we're increasing the appropriation for revenues there, $50,000, and offsetting that with an increase in expenditures by $50,000. Other equipment, $2,000, small items of equipment, $47,000 with some things that they'd purchased. And the tree board, increasing revenues there, $14,500. And that, and offsetting expenditures there, $14,500. We got the Verizon Tree Recovery Grant Program, and we use that money to buy trees and distribute it through the community. Animal Control Fund, increasing revenues there, $50,999. Donations are expected to come in more than we had originally budgeted by $20,000. And last spring, we had gotten the grant from Petco of $30,999. And this is basically rolling that into this fiscal year because we spent that money this fiscal year. And on the capital expenditures there, the addition is the new education building that we had put out there at the shelter. We had done a budget amendment last spring because we thought we'd get about $20,000 worth of work done on that before June 30th last year, and we really didn't get kicked off with that until July. So basically moving that $20,000 to what we did this year. And the total overall cost of that building was about $60,000 is what we've got in it. And then the customer service fund, which is reimbursed by the utility departments, I've got workers' comp claims there of $10,000, postage of $10,000. And in their capital, basically, we had budgeted $20,000 to do some programming for our utility billing system. We didn't do that this year, but we did, though, expand the drive-throughs. So we used about $21,000 there for the drive-through. And then the last fund in our ordinance for the amendments is the health insurance fund. And we are looking to increase the appropriation for expenditures there of $1,300,000, and that's medical claims. We expect the claims to exceed the original budget. So this increases the appropriation there and will reduce the fund balance by $1.3 million. And on this fund, I think we talked a lot about this fund during our budget work session. We are going to reduce the fund balance this year by $1.2 million, and that's the first that we've done, reduced the fund balance in about four or five years. So we are, we are looking at that fund to make changes for the plan year starting July 1st or January 1st. So that's all the appropriate changes in the budget that I have, and I would recommend your approval.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak about any of these items? We will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions from the council?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Counsel.
Looks like the money we've made from increasing in sales tax and all these taxes is being taken by the health insurance costs. Is that roughly a wash?
Well, they're two separate funds, so that money does not go into that health insurance fund.
I know. Looks like we had more in tax, taxes, general taxes brought in, but we've had larger costs in health insurance.
Yes.
It seems to me that they've kind of balanced each other to some extent.
Yes, to some extent, yes.
All right. All vote.
Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7B, consider resolution R210516 authorizing the execution terms, issuance, sale, and payment of general obligation refunding bond series 2021A of the city of Cookeville, Tennessee, and providing the details thereof, Ms. Emmer.
Mayor and council, this slide, if you can see it. We currently have four general obligation bonds outstanding, and the total balance outstanding as of June 30th would be $18,785,000. What this resolution will do this evening will give us permission to refinance the 2015 series. The 2015 series was issued in November of 2015. The original amount was $9,815,000, and the proceeds were used to construct Tennessee Avenue. The balance at June 30th will be $6,740,000. And what the resolution itself does is it, it authorizes us to issue what's called general obligation refunding bonds. And it basically, we're going to refinance the 2015 bonds. So it'll provide, will authorize bonds in sufficient amount to pay off the principal outstanding of the 2015 bonds, plus whatever interest accrues from the date that we make the last interest payment until the day that we pay them off, and then plus any other bond costs that would be involved. The resolution provides all the details and provisions of the bond, the definition. It authorizes the mayor to execute all the documents related to the sale, sets forth maturity and redemption dates, just like any of our other bonds, and keeps us in compliance with all the regulations and laws. The resolution also authorizes the mayor to engage bond counsel, and our bond counsel is Waller-Lanston Dorton Davis. And the engagement letter for them is attached to the resolution as Exhibit B. Their fee for the, for acting as bond counsel on this refunding is $15,620. And the resolution authorizes Cumberland Securities Company as our municipal advisor on this bond. The refunding plan was prepared by Cumberland Securities and has been filed and accepted by the Division of Local Government Finance, the Tennessee Comptroller of the Treasury. And the benefits of doing this refunding is that some Cumberland Securities estimates a net present value savings to the city of $312,936. Interest on the 2015 bonds range from 2% to 2.75%. And we anticipate with this refunding, a true interest cost on the refunding bonds of less than 2%. It's going to be more in the line of about 1.4%, 1.5%. So there is some savings there, and that's why we want to do this. There is cost involved. So the estimated bond issue cost, if we did the $6,885,000, which would be to pay off the bonds, any accrued interest, plus the bond issue cost. The underwriter discount is estimated to be about $70,000 there. Cumberland Securities, as municipal advisor, their estimated fee is about $20,655. And then bond counsel, their engagement letters for $15,620. Moody's has to rate these bonds, so their agency fee would be around $18,000. And then other miscellaneous bond issue costs of putting together offering statement is about $10,000. So the total bond issue cost is $134,000, which would be paid from the proceeds of the new bonds. But again, we're hoping, we're estimated to save about $312,000, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any questions in council?
I'd just like to thank you for your hard work on this, saving us $300,000 is a real big deal.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All vote.
Five yes motion carries.
7C, consider authorizing the city manager to execute contract for stop-loss insurance coverage. Ms. Emmer.
Mayor and council members, now I feel bad if you said that, Mark, because now I'm going to take my money away. So the city maintains a self-insured health plan for our employees and retirees, and we've been self-insured since 1998. We currently cover 1,174 lives on our plan, and we carry stop-loss coverage to protect the plan against large claims. The policy is an annual policy on a fiscal year basis. Contract is currently with Blue Re of Tennessee, which is a Blue Cross Blue Shield subsidiary. We have been with them since 2014. The policy covers both medical and prescription drugs. The annual premium this year is about $347,000. And we've had claims on the policy five of the seven years. That's what that little box is down there showing the reimbursements that, so we've had claims on five of the seven years that we've been with Blue Re. For the renewal, due to our cover group having several serious ongoing health issues, no other carrier would even give us a quote. So Blue Re gave us just a couple of options, none of which were very favorable. But what we are recommending is the option within our new with Blue Re is to keep the same coverage of $160,000 specific attachment point and $60,000 aggregate specific deductible. And what that is, is the specific attachment point is like an individual deductible. So each person has to hit $160,000 before the stop-loss kicks in. And then above that, we have an aggregate, aggregating another $60,000 on top of that. So we want to keep the same coverage just because of what I said earlier, we have several covered folks that have serious issues. But Blue Re also wants us to have a conditional, additional deductible for one specific member for one specific procedure. And that deductible is going to be $500,000 for a transplant if this transplant takes place. So the cost for this coverage, as it's presented, is a 26% increase in premiums. So for a single coverage, it'd be $32.88, for family coverage, $92.22, with an estimated annual premium of $435,866. That's an increase of about $90,000. So I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any comments or questions? All vote.
Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7D, consider resolution R210517 approving an amendment to the letter of intent relative to project bottle and authorizing the city manager to execute all instruments necessary to effect the transactions described therein. Ms. Mills.
Mayor and council members, in 2017, the city council adopted resolution 210517 authorizing a letter of intent with SCICE applications international corporation, or probably known as SAIC, relative to economic incentives for the corporation. One component of the LOI was a provision for premium wage incentives for SAIC achieving certain employment and income thresholds over a five-year period. The corporation is eligible for incentives provided jointly by the city and county of up to $2,400 per job for up to 300 full-time equivalent jobs. My understanding that SAIC is currently up to 175 full-time equivalent jobs. The resolution for the council would extend the period for achieving the threshold for an additional 12 months from July 1st, 2022 to July 1st, 2023. The extension is justified due to the impact of COVID-19 pandemic on the corporation. All of the provisions of the original LOI will remain in full force and effect. As you know, SAIC is a valuable asset for our community, and I would ask for your approval of resolution 210517. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion second. Questions in council? All vote.
Five yes motion carries.
7A, consider awarding bid for King Creek Dog Park fencing. Leisure Services, Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. We advertise and receive bids for our King Creek Dog Park. This is a rebid that we did. We advertised, this time we received three bids. This time, we changed the specification a little bit, too, because we recognized that we had a need to improve the northern boundary fence line. So we added as an option, including that northern boundary from CC Camp Road up to where the, the, that northern boundary ends next to the Wasick property and turns that corner. So that's a portion, a part of the King Creek Park fence. That would all be galvanized fence. The remainder of the dog park would be the black vinyl coated fencing that would be five feet in height. We've received three bids this time, the low bid for the dog, the base bid being the dog park section, that is $30,500, a cloyed fencing. And I would recommend that we include the option of the, in doing the entire, that entire section of the northern boundary fence, which is an additional $92,000. So those two together would be $39,700 with cloyed fencing, and I would be happy to answer any questions, but I recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the bid, including option one? So moved. Motion second. Any questions or comments from the council? All vote. 7S, consider declaring a surplus to Depot Museum's LNN caboose. Rick Woods.
Thank you, members of council, mayor. The, as you know, the Depot Museum has a few pieces of rolling stock there as interpretive structures or interpretive to what we exhibit there at the depot. And recently, the Friends of the Museum, Depot Museum, and the museum staff requested that we surplus the LNN caboose and remove it from the grounds. That is the caboose that's been there the longest, and it does not really fit into the timeline, the interpretive timeline of the museum, which is during the depot's passenger years, 1909 to 1955. We still have the Tennessee Central Caboose, which is an steam engine, which are accurate in the timeframe of the depot. And if we remove the LNN caboose, that would free up space to bring in some other, potentially bring in some other more accurate cars, a passenger car, a dining car, something along those lines. So tonight, I am asking you to declare the LNN caboose as surplus property so that we may remove it and, and pre-up that space.
Thank you. Before we, I was contacted by Glenn Jones, the president of Friends of the Depot in Baxter, and they would be very much like to have this. They have no railcar in Baxter with their depot, and they would very much like to do that. So I'm going to make a motion that we declare the caboose surplus, that we donate it to the city of Baxter and/or the Friends of the Baxter Depot, however that legal wording needs to be, with the understanding they will pay all costs associated with the move. And then if by chance this falls through, and they're not able to do that, we would ask the other depots in Putnam County, all good Monterey, if they have an interest before we then would put it on GovDeals. Is that illegal?
Yeah. Is there a motion pending?
That's, no, I'm making that motion. Yes.
Can we have a timeframe?
Sure. What's a reasonable timeframe? And I'll add that to the motion.
Six months.
Six months. Six months, okay. So we'll say within six, am I everybody good with that? Within six months. So that's part of my motion, that all those items that I listed would be completed within six months.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any discussion from the council? All vote.
Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7G, consider awarding bid for 2020 Double Springs Master Meter Pits relocation project. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, as you're aware, we have purchased part of the Double Springs Utility District that's within the city limits of Cookeville and a couple parcels outside. We need to relocate their master meter pits, and we have opened bids, had two bidders. Maple Construction was the low bidder. We bid it with the base bid and an alternate bid. The base bid was with PPC pipe. There was, PPC pipe's been going up. It's been getting closer to duct line pipe, so we wanted to see what the delta would be between the two. And so we added an alternate bid of ductile. So what I'm asking the council to do is authorize us alternate base plus alternate. And if we are able to get the PPC and it comes in, we may go that route, but allow us to do the ductile lifts if we need to. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, sir. Want you to word that exactly so we know what we're.
Requesting the council authorize us to approve the base plus alternate bid.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the base plus alternate bid? Motion second. Any questions from the council? Oops, forgot to put.
Five yes motion carries.
Thank you. 7H, consider approval of proposed settlement agreement with Sheridan Family Enterprises. Ron Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm seeking council authorization for the city, for the city manager to be allowed to sign this contract with the settlement agreement with the Sheridan Enterprise. The agreement was originally formed to try to resolve some condemnation issues out on the Tennessee Avenue with the Sheridan Family Trust. In those negotiations, by city ordinance, we're allowed to do cost share, sewer cost share agreements also. And so we ended up trying to get sewer out to their property and settle the condemnation cases. The council passed the original agreement back in 17. It got held up. City council approved an extension in 2019, and it sort of got held up also. And so we're back now requesting council to.
And so we're back now requesting council to authorize city manager to enter into this current contract. And it basically centers around getting sewer service out to the interchange, the lower portion of the interchange that the Sherdens have, and it'll get us through a subdivision there. And like I said, city ordinance allows us to do cost share agreements. We think it's a good deal for our ratepayers and, and them. So we would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Motion second. Any questions or comments from the council? All vote.
Closing the vote. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. That concludes our agenda portion. We have time at the end for citizens that would like to address the council and non-agenda items. Do we have anyone? Council members, anybody have anything? Yes, Councilwoman.
Back to the depot. I just wanted to say thank you to the friends of the depot and everybody that works hard to run the depot. I've been in there a few times and got play of the trains. And the actual accuracy of the museum and the displays that it has, there's a lot of hard work and effort that goes into that. And it's, it's something unique. You go to a lot of cities, you might see depots, you might see trains. But to walk in somewhere, be greeted, see activity, for there to be even an open door is something the city should really be proud of. So just want to say thank you.
Did you hear one second?
Actually, over here at this one is the operator. Sorry.
Well, thank you for, for letting me. I just, just have a comment and actually just a request. I'm Don Prince. There's been quite a few times that we have chased the people off the top of the five oh nine in the tender car. They're climbing on it. They're marking up the inside of the tender car. And I was just wondering maybe if there was something other that we could do to make sure that, that people aren't climbing on anything? Because if they were to fall off of it somewhere, it could hurt them tremendously. So just wondered if there was something that we could do to ensure that people don't climb on the, I just hate for somebody to get hurt. And like I say, we, we've runs quite a few people off of it.
Rick, there are cameras there, are there not?
Well, there is, there, there is a camera that's not functioning properly right now. And there are signs, there is signage up there.
Yeah. Council, any other comments?